Two selectmen are here. Hear from public? Anybody want to speak?
Wait a minute, I need guests.
Oh, sorry. Paul Varga. Kara Fishman. And someone on the phone. 487-4403.
That's a town number.
That's Kara.
That's Kara?
Maybe.
No, that's a town line. So it's on mute.
I'm here.
Hello?
Hi.
Catherine, can you hear me?
Just fine.
Okay. So now that we know it's Kara, I was just gonna say congratulations. You probably see me a lot, you won't be happy.
Oh, no.
That's it for now. I wanna see, I wanna see what you guys are gonna talk, talking about as far as opening the building goes. I got my packet from Kara this week about personal property taxes, and I always like to do that kinda thing in person. I understand the dilemma. However, I have an appointment tomorrow at the Town of Wyndham to take care of some other stuff with them. So it's possible, it's just a pain in the neck, to put it mildly. So, alright, thank you.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, you will be meeting with Kara tomorrow as well? Or you'll be meeting with her, talking with her at some point?
No, 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 I just, I normally like to do it in person, just to make sure that she actually gets it. Because she time stamps it, and it's critical for, obviously for her, because it's for the business property tax, for the farm. So there's some time-critical things in there that have to get through. So I normally hand-deliver it. All I'm saying is that, it's not that I don't trust the post office, but I don't.
Well, the thing is, we do have a window.
Yeah, I know, and if I, what I'll probably do is, once I get it done, I'll call Kara, and, and, you know, we'll figure something out, but...
And I'm, and I'm sure Kara will be available for you.
Oh, I know she will.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anybody else from the public? Nope, okay. Briefing, we don't have a lot to cover in this. I can't remember, but I do think that between the last meeting and this one is when we signed the contract for the fire, fire truck. It was actually signed. And, uh, that's, and the governors come out with a few more up, whoops, feedback. The governors come out with a few more updates on the size of meetings and everything, but it's really not necessarily pertaining to what we're dealing with in our town offices. So, just to let you know that. And they certainly have come out with some more guidelines around recreational activities. Bill, are you still there? Because we lost your picture.
I'm here.
Okay, good. Alright, hear from boards, commissions, committees? None being here, will pass. Acceptance of minutes of special meeting of September 21st? Bill, are you good with those minutes?
I am, I'll move acceptance of the minutes.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Old business, to discuss town of, uh, office building reopening strategy, draft policies. Bill, would you like to talk about that?
Well, as, as you know, I've been bringing this up the last several meetings. And what I wanna do in a, in a safe manner is eventually set up some sort of a, a goal for a timeframe when we can do that. I haven't been getting direct complaints, although I've been getting a lot of inquiries, very similar to what Paul was just talking about. About what our anticipated openings may be and that sort of thing. But to tell you the truth, with the recent statistics going up on the cases being reported and everything.
Yeah, Bill.
I'm gonna move that we table that till our next meeting for further discussion.
Actually, you can't table a motion, and you shouldn't be tabling something twice. What I'd prefer, if it's, if it works for you, Bill, is that, um, we, uh, we take, uh, use what we have drafted so far, and send that off, have it reviewed by Eastern Highland, the Department of Health, to see if they have any further recommendations for that strategy. And, uh, and then be able to work with that and review that at our next meeting.
Yeah, if we don't wanna use the term "table," we could use the term, just carry it over to our next meeting.
Well, actually, on the...
I imagine they're being bombarded right now, but I certainly have no objections to forwarding that on to them and ask them.
We've actually been quite fortunate, when it came to the library and everything, they were really, really quick. I was amazed, so hopefully, they can help us with this as well. The, um, what I suggest is that, you know, that our discussion right now is that, oh, what we wanna do is maybe proceed with having them take a look at what's been drafted, and then come back, see if there's any significant gaps in it, any recommendations they might have. And then we can take a look and put that on as new business to review their recommendations.
I, I have no problem with that, as long as it's carried forward.
Yes, absolutely, it's gonna be on there until we're open, in a, in one way or another. Okay, we should be doing things that we're proceeding, as, as quickly as we can forward. I certainly have res, some reservations with the uptick in cases. And I always remember that if anybody in our town offices comes down with COVID, we have a significant problem. It's one thing if, you know, we, it certainly wouldn't be good if, if someone in the library got it, but it would not be the same as having to potentially shut down our town operations. So that's why I'm a little cautious or conservative about what our approach could be, and that's the only reason. I do wanna hear if there are any complaints about town offices, people not being able to come into the building. Like in Paul's case, we wanna make sure that we accommodate his needs without delay, and to make sure that, you know, that we're meeting any timetables that people have. So I think we can do that if they give us a call, and we set up to meet them at the window or whatever, to receive whatever the documentation is and get it time stamped appropriately, that kinda thing. And certainly, we have people answering the phones during all the regular hours, and I carry the, the town phone for any other hours or calls. So we're just, we're trying to be very responsive in a very careful, um, helpful way. Any comments?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, good, thank you. Alright, tax refunds.
F1.
Yes, um?
Sharshad Romo. Sketch 12-129 for $117.51.
So moved citing the statute.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Discuss, discuss an act on scheduling of special town meeting, the purpose of which is to form a permanent advisory Ashford School Building Committee. As Bill and I know, and, and I'm sure Paul's, and you're, I think you're at almost every meeting. This has been delayed for quite a while because of COVID. Originally, it was scheduled for March to try and do that town meeting. And, um, uh, we've been doing some follow-ups on the venue that we could use for it. So Chris, do you wanna speak to it?
Sure.
Sure.
Thanks.
Um, I've had a couple of conversations with town council. And if we get the blessing of Eastern Highlands and the procedures we follow, they see no reason why we can't do an outdoor meeting, which will be open to the public. In the meeting notice, we will cite the executive order about distancing and masking. Um, so I have a call into Eastern Highlands, I didn't hear back from today, hopefully I'll hear back from tomorrow. But as I said, council has no problem, um, doing basically a public meeting and not doing it virtually.
And the, in terms of trying to schedule this meeting, we would do wanna pursue getting it on the books here, or get it, get communicated to the public. So, you wanna speak to that, and what we talked about for the venue?
Sure, we're talking about doing it in Pompey Hollow Park in the gazebo on Saturday, November 7th, hopefully it doesn't snow. And if we do, we hold off till November, we can get it in the citizen, so that everybody knows about it, everybody knows what the restrictions will be. And hopefully, people will come.
And we're talking about doing that at 11 o'clock on that Saturday?
Right.
When the sun is warm? Um, just so you know, we, the attorneys worked through different scenarios. And also, we've looked at different scenarios and how we could do, uh, COVID. What's the word I wanna use? COVID careful management of the meeting. And also remembering that we have only residents can vote in that meeting. So you have to, you have to check out, you have to verify that they're residents coming into the meeting. And we looked at trying to do it virtually, and also try, even looked at different technologies that might be better to use than what we're using, say, for this particular meeting. Because you do have to take in their votes as a poll, it would also be very clear as to what, who they voted, you know, what they voted for. Because in that kind of a poll, it would be actually recorded as to what their vote was. As opposed to a general hand vote, where we typically don't do that. Or even a ballot, little paper ballot vote, where we still don't know that, for whatever reason, just, we're talking through the logistics of it. And trying to hold it in a way that was indoors was impossible. And we're also familiar with the fact that Wellington held their, a town meeting recently, very like this one, in one of their open air areas. So what we're looking for is hopefully some good weather, and trying to get it in the citizen in a timely fashion, so that we can get it communicated to the full community, as opposed to the Willmanni Chronicle, or the Hartford Current, or whatever, which are also very expensive. And not as many people receive those as receive the Ashford Citizen by any means. We'll also make sure that it's out on our town website. Okay, so Bill, what do you, what do you think of that?
Uh, what would be the deadline that, that we'd have to make a decision on this? I mean, I, I, this the first I've heard of this, and I, I think it's a good idea, I'd just like it to sink in a little. I, I'm not sure I have any questions, other than logistically off the top of my head.
It can wait, it can wait till the next meeting, but that will be the deadline to get it in the citizen.
Can we do that, Catherine, just carry it to the next meeting, if we have time to do that?
Right. Right, um, should we find, um, I'm trying to remember our next meeting, I can't remember the exact date for the next meeting, it's the 20-something. It's the 23rd, 20...
Five and seven is 12-19.
12-19, okay, so it just might make that deadline for the citizen. And we'll try to plan accordingly for it to get into the citizen, hopefully. Any questions you have, please send them in, or, or let me know, and we'll get them resolved. So it looks like the best scenario that we have for having it, and we do wanna get this resolved.
Yep.
Okay, anything else you feel we need to cover on that one, Chris? That I missed?
I have an addition to the agenda, if you wanna put it in there, I think it's appropriate.
Okay, and this is, um, to, uh, uh, do a replacement of one of the people on that committee, correct?
Right, Michael Gardner was originally named to the committee. Board of Selectmen approved him, since he is no longer the building official, you felt it would be more appropriate if, um, Jim Rupert was named to the committee in his place. So it would mean a change of slate for the meeting. He felt that Jim was much more qualified than anybody else he could think of. Jim's a fire marshal, he's a building official, he was chairman of the Board of Ed. So he thought that would be a good fit, that was his recommendation for his replacement.
What's your thinking, Bill?
I, I have no objection to that.
Yeah, I think it's a pretty good choice as well.
I, you know, I think we've all discussed before, I, I think it's a excellent potential working group that's, uh, you know, got a value of knowledge and prior experience in town.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry that Mike wouldn't be on it, but I, I think Jim is an excellent replacement.
And I appreciate Mike's recommendation, Michael's recommendation. Okay, so...
I will make a motion, then...
To add to the agenda.
To add to the agenda discussion.
Who's?
My phones.
That's yours? You have a piano riff?
Yes.
Oh my!
I'll make a motion to add reconsideration of membership of the school building committee.
Okay, and that's item 8E, is that correct? Um, I'm sorry? That'll be item 8E?
Eight. Yeah.
Okay, uh, I, I second that, all in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Okay, and then can we have another motion to move that up in the agenda, uh, ahead of item 8D?
So moved.
I second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Okay, um, let's see.
Do you wanna motion to that effect?
Actually, can, can I make a friendly amendment to that, and it's to move it up to item, move item E, which we just created, up to, just prior to item C, before the assessors' report.
So it'd be item B1?
Yes, thank you.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Thank you, sir. Um, okay. Assessors' report on stat, uh, I'm sorry, let's, so let's finish talking about that.
I will make a motion in view of the request of Mike Gardner to be removed from the building committee consideration to nominate Jim Rupert to fill that position.
Uh, I'll second that. Any more discussion?
I assume we've talked to Jim about this, or somebody has?
Yes, Jim is willing.
Or are we nominating 'cause he's not at this meeting?
That also, but he said he would. Okay, uh, any more discussion?
I'm all set.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Okay, now on to the assessors' report on status of revaluation proposal negotiated through Northeastern Connecticut Council of Governments. Kara, you wanna talk to us? Uh, you're on mute.
Sorry, so this is a little bit convoluted and not entirely settled, as far as, as, uh, or everything. But I did want to introduce this, because you guys have to make a decision. So I don't know how familiar you are, so Christine probably forwarded a memo to you that I wrote up on regional revaluation.
Uh, Bill, Bill, did you get that memo?
I did, and I, I reviewed it.
Good.
Okay. So basically, uh, you know, the, the town is part of a five-year revaluation cycle. We've been going with NICOG for the past two, um, two cycles. And we're at the beginning, we just finished one, um, cycle, and they just are, are getting signatures now on the contract for the next five-year cycle. So, um, so a lot of this, this information that I presented to you had to do with the Enabling Legislature's background on the, um, regional revale, and how that came about, and the different parties that involved. There are basically two contracts involved that you would potentially sign. One, you, the Board of Selectmen, would be the, um, or you would approve, I guess, for Catherine to sign. The first is, there's a contract for, uh, the, with Vision Government Solutions, which was chosen as the bid, the bid, um, the awarded bid. Um, and then there is another contract where you are making the contract with NICOG to administer the program, coordinate it. And, um, you know, it makes the payments, you pay every year, you've been make, every year the town has been making payments, an annual payment, uh, sort of like a amortization of the cost over five years. And, um, NICOG just pays, uh, Vision, uh, for what they're, for the work that they've been doing. So, um, in the midst of all this, and, and I can say that, um, I did not get a copy of the RFP until after the bids were received. So, um, uh, I provided input, you know, in, I forget what the exact date was, but it was like the, towards the end of June. Once I had gotten it, Ralph sent me a copy. So we switched, um, uh, CAMA system providers, CAMA is the system that's used to, to track real estate in town. We've been using Vision. And, um, uh, I would, uh, I decided to switch after, you know, getting presentations from both companies on, um, because NIC, uh, the Equality System seemed to be easier to explain. It was more straightforward in its pricing, and, um, uh, it, the customer support seemed to be a little bit more friendly. Vision had done, you know, where you had to submit a ticket each time you wanted, it was just a pain, because sometimes you just wanted to call someone and just get the answer. So, um, in any case, uh, I, I'm not, I don't know how much detail you want me to go through, but, um, so NICOG got these contracts. They were, um, they're summarized on the second page under comparative metrics for 2021. There were four different proposals, and Vision's, um, was, um, close to the, to the lowest one. Uh, and, um, Equality, which also bids, um, was the highest. And that is because the only towns that are with Equality now are Ashford, that are part of the NICOG revaluation, are NIC, are, um, Ashford and Scotland. So, um, I looked over the response, I did not, uh, have a lot of confidence in Vision's ability to work in Equality, since most of these, um, software systems are, uh, pretty proprietary, and, um, the revale companies tend to work only in the systems that, you know, they sell. So, I didn't, uh, I, I didn't include it, but that there was a response from Vision, basically saying, we have two people, you know, that are qualified to, uh, work in various CAMA systems, and they could learn, basically, Equality. I didn't feel that that was a very good response for what, you know, we need. I also spoke with NICOG, the head of it, uh, her name is Vicki Powell, and asked them if Vision had done any revales in Equality, and, um, was told they did Franklin, and, uh, one other town that they had to hire, basically hire Equality to come in and set up the cost models. So, um, this is all a little bit unsettled yet, but I did get a, a proposal from Equality to just do, oh, I should say, Eastford also has Equality, and I found out, again, I, you know, I don't know why people don't relate these things to each other, but, um, I found out, you know, when the RFP, when the bid came out, that they were not going with, um, the regional revale. They were going directly to contract with Equality. I have not gotten a copy of that contract, um, I've, uh, requested it, you know, from the, um, uh, from the assessor over there, she's out now, for a couple of days, so I don't, and I can't find it in the minutes for the Board of Selectmen, so I don't know what, what the actual award was. But, um, in any case, so she gave, she gave, um, she gave me a draft proposal today, which I looked through. It needs, you know, there's a bunch of questions I have and things that need to be fixed, but the, the bottom line is, it would be, um, I don't have this. Why don't I, hang on one second, let me just find it here. It ended up being, it was like 20, oh, 2677, right, which, it's on page three, item four. So the Equality Quote of 2677 a parcel is competitive with Vision's bid of 2695 a parcel. And the, the real difference has to do with the payment plan that the town would make. Right now, you're making, or you're set to make these $12,063 annual payments to NICOG. And, uh, it has not, I checked with Cheryl, it has not been paid for this year, because we don't have a contract, so, you know, they haven't billed us. Equality would have to be paid over probably two fiscal years, which would be this one and the next one. And, um, in that table four, uh, it shows that the, um, the Equality payments would be made in those two years. So the, the overall cost, it, it's very little difference, just like, you know, the $300 difference between the bottom line. So I don't, I'm not sure how you want to proceed with this, if you want, um, if you, you're just like, let's go with NICOG, and we're gonna go with that. Or if you, uh, you know, I, I've been talking, well, I've been trying to email with Vicki, there are a bunch of issues on her bid, that, that, because it was just like a real draft, because I asked for it on Friday. And, um, so I don't have an exact, um, you know, contract that I can present, or, or I can have, um, the attorney review. So what I mean, um, what is being asked of, of you, the Board of Selectmen, um, I, I did speak with, um, I know there's a contracting requirement, um, for anything over 10,000. And, um, we are set to, you know, we are on a schedule to do our revaluation, like, we're supposed to be starting now, okay? So, um, I wasn't sure how you wanted to proceed. I, you, you could, I did speak with Duncan Forsyth, I guess the town attorney, um, about the contracting ordinance, and he said that, um, section five, you know, allows for a waiver, you can waive that. Where this would be, uh, basically an extraordinary circumstance. Let me see what I have. Yeah, the, uh, waive requirements of ordinance by reason of extraordinary circumstances or contingencies that could not reasonably be foreseen and guarded against. So I'll just leave it there and ask you how you wanna proceed. I wish I could be more definitive in what I was asking for and recommending, but I, I don't have the, all the information yet.
Bill, any comment?
Excuse me?
I'm just asking Bill if he has any comment.
Yeah, um, well, how critical is, is our timing on this, Kara?
It's fairly critical, because you have to get it done every five years, and, um, we would have to get a waiver from, um, OPM. And I have not done that process before, I guess it's doable, but I, I, I don't know what the process is for all of that.
I, I'm wondering what other towns are doing, given their situation with COVID, in that, whether they're getting a lot of requests for, for delays of the time. whether they're getting a lot of requests for, for delays of the timing and that on, on the due dates. Do you know that?
No, what? Yeah, OPM has said basically you could do data mailers for everybody. That counts as a full inspection. I think the companies that are going out are going to the houses, to the front door. They're not doing interior inspections. I can personally tell you, I've been doing, you know, for new construction additions, nobody has had any problem with me going in their house. I wear a mask. But I'm, you know, revaluation may be a different animal. So, but I, hopefully by next year, or next spring, things will be a little bit better for getting in. I don't know, but if they're not, then they're not and we'll just deal with, you know, getting information either at the door or, or by data mailer.
Would you feel?
I haven't heard anyone be, I haven't heard of anyone postponing their revaluation.
Okay. Do you, would it be critical if we continue this discussion at our next meeting and you had an opportunity to look at the contract that you're looking for? That you can't get a copy and maybe get a little more research for us?
Yes.
That's my gut feeling, Catherine, is to try so we can all study this a little more. I'd also like to get something I, you said you, you talked to our town council?
Right.
Have you had a chance, Catherine, to discuss this at all with Duncan?
Nope, not yet.
I'd like to get some input from him and if he feels, you know, that we're allowed to do that under the ordinance, maybe just a brief letter from him verifying that this circumstance allows us to utilize that waiver.
Cara, did you, Cara, did you receive a letter from Duncan?
No, I just spoke with him on the phone.
Very good. All right. Yeah, I think that would be good so that we have that documented, so it's clear.
So are you going to request that or do I request that? From Duncan?
I, I think I prefer the Board of Selectmen, we can reference your conversation, but I, I think I'd prefer, since we've got to make the motion for the waiver of the ordinance, I think I'd prefer that to come from our office, Catherine.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you. Okay, Cara, thank you for having the preliminary discussion with Duncan. That's helpful. And also for providing the information that you have with this. It was very good to understand what you felt the issues were with Vision. In particular.
But, and the only, you know, there's all these withdrawal paragraphs in, in the regional revale contract, but you haven't signed it yet, so they don't apply. If you didn't sign it, then, you know, there's no contract.
Okay.
When we're talking to Duncan, perhaps we can take that matter up with him too. And, and just get him to give us a brief opinion on that. I mean, I agree if, if we have not signed and we don't have to do it with a nonparticipation, but I'd like something for our file verifying that. What I'd recommend.
Yep. My, my thinking as well. So, so if I understand correctly, Bill, what we're going to do is we're going to table this one. That way, next meeting, we will take, plan on taking action. Sound right?
Sounds good.
So can I get a motion to table it?
So moved.
Second? Motion to table to our next meeting?
Aye.
Okay. Cara, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, I like how thorough you were. So it'll be good to get the rest of that. Okay, discuss and act on filling a Board of Selectmen vacancy. Bill?
Yes.
Your thoughts?
Well, obviously there's some timing involved in that and in talking to Chris just briefly about the agenda was a thought that I think we ought to have on there. I don't know if you're feeling of any action for tonight, but I think it's something that we've got to have in our minds and probably get at least address in one way or another sooner or later.
Correct. I'm sure both of us are working on this, so to speak. Okay, any comments? Or recommendations at this time? Bill?
For?
Forfilling that vacancy?
Well, I've been talking to a couple of people. I don't know, I don't think I'm ready to nominate anybody if that, that's what you mean.
I was wondering where you were with it. So good. All right. All right, so what we have is we have one more regular meeting before those 30 days are up. So we have time and if I recall, it comes up on, I think it's like the 26th day or 27th day of the 30 days when we have our next meeting.
Yeah.
So at that point in time, I would expect that both of us would have people there and we'd have the conversation, make a decision if appropriate. And go from there. Okay. Okay, thanks. All right. Anything else? Because we're going into remarks for the good of the board?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
So far we have 12 applications for the land use position.
Right.
Oh, good.
So we're doing a review of those now. And we have, what, two more weeks?
Yeah, they're due the 16th.
The 16th. That's good. Okay, again, I get to thank Chris because she's been incredibly helpful in providing me with background information on things and it's been very, very helpful. So as you know, Bill, I've been quarantined, we self-quarantined here at home after coming back from Georgia. However, we also, and we came back from Georgia on the, I don't know, 21st, I think. And then we went, my husband and I also went and got tested for COVID doing the standard good test. And I, and we got our results back within a couple of days, actually within five days. And we do not have COVID. But what I've done is I've worked from home until the 14 days were truly up out of respect for the people in the town offices, anybody who might have been a bit concerned. So 14 days are up today. And I will be in the office regular, full-time, starting tomorrow. So let you know where I am and, and everybody else.
Very good.
So again, that's why I was thanking Chris because she's been doing a great job of getting me information, as has Cheryl and Sherry. They literally showed up, you know, and passed it on in a very safe way to me. Or it's been scanned and sent to me, anything that we did signing of anything. So that's worked out really well and pretty creative group and.
We're lucky to have them all.
Yeah, and COVID's not stopping us.
Chris.
And COVID's not stopping us from getting the work done. So that's a good thing.
Very good.
You know, and we are, I have to, I told you, I think a few meetings ago, that we're being deluged with pistol permit applications. And transfer station stickers. And and everybody has been pitching in, going downstairs, giving people information. We meet outside on the steps. It's our open air office. So, you know, a good part of our week is spent going up and down the stairs with various and sundry pieces of paper. But nobody's complained about not being able to come in the building. You know, everybody is taking it in stride, so it's working.
Yep. Okay, okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Have a good night, everyone.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
My screen's dislocated.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.